Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the city council meeting in order. Let's first ask everyone to stand and join and recite in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Kevin, can you please do your roll call?
Jane Bowers Schultz.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Abby Wilder.
Here.
Okay, was everyone given a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting held on September 17th?
Make a motion to accept them as emailed.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay. I know we have a couple people here and this is kind of a longer meeting with some ordinances, so I'm gonna let them go first. Uh, Gary, you wanna come up? Gary called me, well, he called yesterday and we finally talked to him. Um, he represents the Legion Riders from the American Legion. Uh, I think he wanted to ask about doing the yellow ribbons again, right?
What we'd like to do is get permission to do the yellow ribbons around the poles. We go from the bridge to about Third Street on Main. We take First Street from Legion down to the bridge, not the Jackson Street, I believe it is. And we go from Second Street down to, we try to go to about, uh, Mungie.
Okay.
And what we do is we put yellow ribbons around, signifies we're thinking of that. And we would like to do this the first Saturday of November. And we will take them down the last Saturday of November.
Okay.
We've done this in the past for the past six years.
Yep.
I would like to know if it would be okay for us to do it again next year.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Is Wes Worth still involved in this?
Yes, but he will not be around this time because he will be in Florida.
Okay.
In, in his life.
Okay. And I think la- I think last year, did they, did they do bigger ribbons last year or do something different a little bit last year?
They, yeah, uh, Mr. Matt Dyer, I believe, his, uh, mother-in-law or business aunt.
I actually ended up doing it personally, but nonetheless, we, you upgraded last year to the, what you were doing.
Correct, and it will look similar to the same.
Yeah, they're nice looking and, you know.
That's what we're looking for.
We definitely wanna recognize the veterans, so we appreciate that you did the work, so.
So it is okay?
We got it.
I make a motion to allow a second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay, start tying ribbons. Thanks, Gary. Okay, and then we have Loretta here. Uh, Jamie, do you wanna introduce Loretta?
So this is Loretta Good, and she is starting her third week at the Hive. She's been the director of the Hive. Um, she's already had a lot of great ideas and met a lot of the artists and different people, so. Very excited about the opportunity and looking forward to helping the Hive continue to grow and thrive and get more people aware of what we've got, a wonderful asset in the city, so.
And you have set some hours yourself, right?
Yes. I will be open four to seven P.M. on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday evening, and then Saturday morning, nine to eleven, as long as there's not an event going on.
Okay, sure, sure.
And then special events also, we've got some things going on that we're gonna be hosting on the website soon.
If you don't mind, uh, just give us a little bit of your background.
It really doesn't have a whole lot to do with art, except for my lifelong love of art. It just is what motivates me and makes me excited and happy. Uh, my professional background has been, I've been in broadcasting, and I've been a corporate trainer for BMG Columbia House for several years, and also for International Medical Group, which I still work for. I work from home full-time for that, and that's why we're having the evening hours at home. Boring paperwork for insurance companies. Much more exciting.
A good balance.
Yep. No, it's great, uh, we're excited to have you. I know we had, we had a handful of good candidates, and we really did. It was exciting to go through the interviews with everybody, there were some good ones. I mean, she definitely stuck out, I mean, she's very excited to get working, so, I mean, we're excited to have you.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we do have to have a public meeting at seven, so, um... Well, yeah, we do have, um, three final readings of ordinances that I think we could probably get in before, uh, before the public hearing. So, twenty twenty-four dash ten is the budget adoption, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we, go ahead and make a motion?
Yeah.
Need to not introduce that.
I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten on its final reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance for appropriations and tax rate. Very short title.
We're gonna make it a longer short title.
I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten on its second. Second.
Motion is second, roll call vote?
Jane Bowers Schultz.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Abby Wilder.
Yes.
Okay. We have another ordinance, twenty twenty-four dash eleven, it's, uh, change the employee vacation schedule.
I move to place ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven on its third reading by short title only. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash eleven, and ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, amending ordinance number two thousand one dash seven vacation schedule for full-time city employees.
I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven on its final reading. Second.
Motion is second, roll call vote?
Jane Bowers Schultz.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Abby Wilder.
Yes.
And one more, uh, twenty twenty-four dash twelve, police and fire vacation.
I move to place ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve on its third reading by short title only. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve, and ordinance of the city of Decatur common council, amending ordinance two thousand six twelve regarding vacation time for police officers and firefighters.
I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twelve on its final reading. Second.
Motion is second, roll call vote?
Jane Bowers Schultz.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Abby Wilder.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we still have ten minutes.
There's a lot of findings to be told about ordinance.
Okay. Wanna wait? I guess, I, I think most of you heard in the, uh, in the board of works meeting, Jeremy presented, uh, the idea of putting a street light just on the east side of the Monroe Street Bridge, on the north side of the street. There used to be one there years ago before the, the highway was raised. Um, I think it was Jenny that brought it to our attention that, you know, I mean, it is, it's very dark on the bridge. She just got a quote from, uh, Jeremy got a quote from Michiana for twelve thousand eight hundred dollars, I think, somewhere around that range. Um, to go ahead and put a new forty-foot bolt, or light pole with an LED light on there that should light up. Most of the bridge and that whole area where the sidewalk goes to the, to the Riverside Center and everything else. I, I think it's, before it was overhead wire, right? And so now they need to, they do that before, I think that's where a lot of the cost is coming from, is born from the next light pole over to there and under the driveway and...
It is needed, it's very dark.
Yeah.
Where does the funds come from?
Do we have, like, money or do we?
I, I can, I can look into, I don't know how much the streetlight budget has been touched this year, I don't know if you know.
Um, we need to look at that.
Yeah, I'd have to look into seeing.
We still have some needs, but, you know, we need to run it all the way out because we, we see it outages daily.
All right.
Is that something that we can use ARPA funds on?
Yeah, you have.
We could, definitely.
I think just the safety in general, once you're trying to do the Riverside Center.
Yep. Yeah, I mean.
We're getting more and more traffic in there all the time.
Yeah. And it's very well lit in the back now, but you might have that light up front.
I guess, yes, if something you guys wanna improve, you could, I guess, make a motion to use ARPA funds if needed. Me and Jeremy can get together, see if there's available funds in the streetlight, in council's streetlight budget by night. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign, okay.
I did email him just a little bit ago, and he's pretty certain he can have it done by Friday.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Um, this Saturday is the Highland Games, uh, the chamber is asking for a donation, uh, for the Highland Games. I think last year, last year the city gave a thousand dollars to help with the Highland Games. To you guys.
Are you in it this year?
Yep. I know, can I vote on that? I feel like I can.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's one of the greatest events. I'm biased. But anyways, yeah, I'll make a motion that we give a thousand dollars to the chamber for the Highland Games again.
I'll buy it.
This is a great event, for sure, there's a lot of people there and it's a great day.
And again, it's another one of those free events for the public.
Right.
Which is so valuable.
Yep. Okay, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay. Okay, five more minutes. Um, Kurt, you wanna give a little update on the skate park?
Uh, Brett and I have been, uh, putting, uh, the ramps together. We've got everything just about done, we got sure of the public pieces. Uh, we should be getting them in time, you know, coming around here. But, uh, as soon as we get them ready to roll, uh, we are gonna need to, uh, somehow get a better ramp over.
Right.
Uh, this thing is twelve foot, like, twenty feet long.
It's a half pipe, right? It's a whole? Yeah, it's gonna take something. How many pieces are there gonna be to take it over there?
Uh, it's gonna be six pieces.
Okay, okay, great. I know, um, yes, it must have been five or six years ago, there was a group of kids and parents that came in asking for an upgraded skate park, so it's been a long time coming. Uh, we put new asphalt in earlier, and there's concrete ramps, we have some, those metal rails need to go to yet. And then there's, how many total ramps that came from California?
Uh, we, we had the light, we had the quarter pipe, there were two of those, each one. You gotta ask them all.
You're the new expert.
Yep. And, you know, this, this, uh, this whole project came with the help of a bunch of kids, um, that were skating downtown, skating on benches and on picnic tables, and we actually brought them in and listened to them, and they designed the park with all of the features that they wanted, and so this will be their park. And hopefully we can have sometime an opening here soon.
We've done a lot of stuff, so, stuff we did in the country we had ordered.
Mm-hmm.
The company needs that California super.
Yep. Right, so, look for an opening of that soon. Well, we just got a couple minutes left to get into the public meeting. Our public hearing. We just got to pick one, two minutes.
Just a second, we need to make it a matter of record that this public hearing is properly advertised and overlapping taxing units for another time, not a public meeting.
I'll make a motion to make that a matter of record.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
I got something, or, I mean, I've got a citizen that's been asking me about utility easements on, I mean, he's on Vine Street. Is there anything we can do as a city? I mean, I've talked to Jeremy Wilbur too, but enforcing easements when AEP comes down and they take a pole down, that they have to take the pole out. What they're doing, a subcontractor came through, they put all these poles in, they cut them down to their height, wouldn't left the cable and phone. This guy had three poles in his yard and now went to six. And then the phone company, the cable company said it could be four or five years before they get out there to move their stuff off the pole. I don't know, I don't know, our hands are tied on easement like that, or there's some kind of ordinance that we can make that could make them pull the pole when they take the pole out? Because his theory was AEP is doing the same project going down Pickway Road, and they're tearing every pole out and they're switching everything over. But in town here, there was too much stuff on the pole, so they decided not to switch it over, so they just left. I don't know.
Do utility companies have a modus operandi? Um, they have a modus operandi in how they utilize their, their easements. Um, I can look into what options we have to assist.
So, I'm on, I'm actually on the right-of-way committee through AIM, so it's statewide, and this is something I can bring up in the meeting. And that'll get a statewide answer from all kinds of people about how they deal with it. But it's all about utility right-of-ways.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Put my hat up.
No, this would be the perfect group to bring that up in, for sure.
It's kind of a bad, it's kind of a bad thing. I am, it's changed on the poles, but communication is on the same pole. Maybe neither phone or cable or whatever, they're, they're on the same pole, so. AEP does the right thing by changing their rock pole, that's on a pole on the low. Maybe a lot of the communication people come around, but they don't ever seem to come around, we get complaints very frequently. Why is there not a pole around these I am?
Right.
If you ask the person figuring, just see what they do, and they remain from that type, but...
Yeah, I'll bring it up in those, one of those committee meetings and see if I can figure anything out. For sure. Okay, we're at seven o'clock. So, we need a motion to suspend the city council meeting and open a public hearing.
Still move?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay. Mr. Sword, I think you're on your own, Colton Bickel's not here, right?
Right.
He sent me on. So, Mr. Sword's here to represent, uh, metal in motion, asking for a tax abatement for some new equipment. And, we're here for the public hearing, right?
Correct. And the motion to suspend and enter the public hearing is made and voted on?
Yes.
Okay. So we are now in a public hearing on the petition from metal in motion for a five-year tax abatement for the installation of personal property at their location at eight three three South Eleventh Street, Indicator. Um, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak in favor of the granting of a tax abatement for metal in motion? Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition of the tax abatement, or the, a granting of a tax abatement for metal in motion? Hearing and seeing no one come forward, this would conclude the public hearing on this matter.
Okay.
So we would...
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. I'll make a motion to open the city council meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay, so we have a final reading of the...
We have the...
Confirming resolution?
Introduction of the confirming resolution, um, that would be, that would grant a five-year tax abatement on the, the newly installed or to be installed, um, equipment for metal in motion.
Right. Okay. I move to introduce resolution twenty twenty-four dash nine by short title only. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Resolution twenty dash nine, a resolution of the common council of the city of Decatur, confirming the establishment of an economic revitalization area upon the application of metal in motion. I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash nine. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay. Thank you, thanks for doing business in Decatur, appreciate it.
So we will take your SB one, finish the completion of that, um, submit that along with the confirming resolution to the auditor, and then next year, next, between January and May, you'll have some steps to take to move forward. But this, this will become a... Uh, you'll need to contact the auditor's office. And work with Holton.
Colton, Colton.
Yeah, work with Holton.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. And we need a motion to sign all this, or it's all proof.
That's, it's just part of it.
For those in the audience that might not know what Metal's In Motion is, is a metal fabrication, uh, business that he has already set up on Eleventh Street near, um...
Merritt Center?
No.
Not near?
Behind Kroger.
Behind Kroger.
Yeah, oh, wow.
Next to him, next to Hamilton Installation. And he's putting in another major piece of equipment to do more metal fabrication.
Indecent, totally off.
Okay, what do you want to add?
There is an happy day.
Okay, yeah. Let's go ahead and do it. How do you want to do this with the water sewer ordinances? We've got through the first two readings, right?
Mm-hmm. They're separate ordinances? Yeah, they are. Oh, thanks.
Okay, I think we have four more ordinances to get through tonight, so. Let's start with, um, the water rate increase ordinance.
All right. That would be thirteen.
Twenty twenty-four dash thirteen.
I move to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen on its first reading by short title. Second.
Uh, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which establishes amended rates and charges for the use of and the service rendered by the Decatur Water System. I move to pass ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen on its first reading. Second.
Motion is second, roll call vote?
Uh, Jane Bowers Schultz.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Abby Wilder.
Yes.
I move to place ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen on its second reading by short title only.
Second.
Uh, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which establishes amended rates and charges for the use of and the service rendered by the Decatur Water System. I move to pass ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen on its second reading. Second.
Motion is second, roll call vote?
Nope, sorry, that's me. Jane Bowers Schultz.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Yes.
Scott Murray.
Yes.
Abby Wilder.
Yes.
I move to table ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen until our next meeting on October fifteenth. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Mayor, I think the public might wanna discuss that a little bit.
Well, it's the sewer, right, ordinance?
Okay.
This is...
Not the water part, the sewer part, okay?
Yeah, twenty twenty-four dash thirteen is for water, and then the next ordinance is the sewer, right?
You're on it.
So, normally these ordinances get passed on, on two passes, on two readings, and then we table it for another meeting, that gives time for the meet, for public to find out more of the information. Uh, and then we have a public hearing, just like we did earlier with Metal in Motion, uh, and that's time for, for the public to speak on behalf of the ordinance. Um, I know we have some people here from the sewer district. Um, we can, we'll give you a couple minutes to bring it up, or do you wanna wait till next meeting? Or do you wanna bring it up, your questions now?
Well, I just wanted to see what was going on, I mean, I just got all this Friday. Um, because with our ordinances too, and customers, our biggest, uh, concern is, is going through with Baker Tilly, getting everything, and if there is a change come January one, how long is that gonna take to get for Baker Tilly to get back? So we can go with our board and figure out, okay, are we gonna have to raise rates also to our customers? And how we get that out to our customers?
Right.
So I was just here, just specifically listening in, trying to figure out what was going on, and kinda caught us a little off guard. I mean, we all kinda knew it was coming, but, I guess.
Right.
And that's something that we're gonna hash out anyway with our...
No, right. And, and, you know, we went through the same steps, you go through Baker Tilly, we went through Kroger, we, we all use our financial advisors to help us set rates, and that's what they're there for, right?
Yes.
So, no, I appreciate you being here. Um, we'll probably go through the two readings and table it.
What's that?
So we're gonna go through the two readings like we normally would and then table it for the next one, and then we'll have a public hearing, which you can get more of the information if, if you need any more questions.
What's driving the cost? I mean, what, what's kind of the drive here on price and rate?
Inflation, costs of everything?
Costs of doing business have gone up. Um, our last rate increase on the sewer side was twenty fifteen. Um, and that was after Intercepter Project, I believe, is what that was for. So, it's been nine years since rate increase. Everybody, on the water side, we're getting ready to do the same thing. Everything's going up in costs, and we're not in the business of making money, we're in the business of maintaining things, and, and so it's, without adjusting our rates, there's no way to, it's not sustainable to be able to keep up with inflation and everything else.
Well, I mean, just looking at it, twenty-four percent in two years just seems pretty high when it comes to an increase.
And it's...
It was a concern for us.
Believe me, it's a concern to us too, it's, it's actually twenty-four percent going back to two thousand fifteen.
Yeah.
So, there hasn't been an increase in nine years. So if you, twenty-four percent's really, we've actually...
I asked them when they were here last time, I said, well, why can't we just add a two percent or three percent cost every year? Well, the state of Indiana doesn't allow you to do that. You have to pay a consulting firm to come tell you what your rates need to be, so that... We probably should have done it five years ago instead of waiting nine years, and now here we are adding twenty-four percent, where if you added three percent over nine years, we don't have no conversation like this, but...
And that's, it's been, in my previous role, it's been a discussion for the last four years on both sides, and it's, there was some things in the works that were hoping to come to fruition a little sooner as far as income rolling in, that didn't, so this, had to get the ball in motion to, to get things moving.
Yeah.
I'm sure we'll have a big discussion.
Right, that's fine, yeah, you, so you have a couple weeks to talk to us, but the other thing is, with utilities, you have to be able to cover your bonds, and if you get below those, then it can change the, the value of the bonds and everything, and, and we do, we can't let that happen, yeah, they're on the bond rating, so.
Our operating expenses were exceeding the revenues, we were dipping in the cash reserves, and we're getting dangerously close to our, our debt service limit, and so there, there was a, a necessary increase in, in that regard, and then taking into consideration the capital improvements, um, and replacements and maintenance. improvements, um, and replacements and maintenance, um, we're here.
Are they pushing the tank yet?
We have, we have another extension, um, until completion is...
I remember the thing, we have to consider this thing pretty heavily in 2027.
So that's not pushing the tank rates right now?
No, 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 no.
So is, is any of this, well, I know, we got to spread the news to our customers, you know, people do that, what, I bid back this question, what's driving it, is this strictly sewage treatment cost that you're talking about that requires this, or is this catching something else that maybe, is, in other words, let's say we got people, you know, our district's, you know, Old County, so people burn or whatever, like, you know, we have to subsidize something going on up here now, but sewage, that's, sure, you know, that, we got the same problem, you know, we got employees in and all that.
Right.
But, is it strictly directed to sewage? I, because you already did water.
Right.
That's, that's my question.
Right, so this one is strictly on sewage, we can't pay any other, anything outside of the Waste Fire Department, we can't pay with sewage funds.
Okay.
So this is strictly sewage.
Okay, thank you.
Treatment, collection, every part of the sewer system, yes. Okay, so 2024-14.
I move to introduce ordinance 2024-14 on its first reading by short title only, second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance 2024-14, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, which amends rates and charges within the city sewer use ordinance, chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four point one seven seven of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 is supplemented. I move to pass ordinance 2024-14 on its first reading, second.
Motion second, roll call vote.
Jane Bowersholt?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Forman?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Abby Wilder?
Yes.
I move to place ordinance 2024-14 on its second reading by short title only, second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance 2024-14, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, which amends rates and charges within the city sewer use ordinance, chapter fifty-four, section fifty-four point one seven seven of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 is supplemented. I move to pass ordinance 2024-14 on its second reading, second.
Motion second, roll call vote.
Jane Bowersholt?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Forman?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Abby Wilder?
Yes.
I move to table ordinance 2024-14 until our next meeting on October fifteenth, second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay.
Um, and then, I don't know if we need a motion, which means schedule two public hearings?
We don't need a motion for that, that's, yeah, that we definitely need to schedule, um, for October fifteenth at seven PM, there'll be a public hearing for both ordinance 2024-13 for water rates, and, um, on 2024-14, those sewer rates.
Okay, we have two notices that we have to move on, uh, next one is salary ordinance for employees.
I move to introduce ordinance 2024-15 on its first reading by short title only, second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance number 2024-15, an ordinance fixing the salaries and wages for employees of the City of Decatur, Indiana, for the year 2025. I move to pass ordinance 2024-15 on its first reading, second.
Motion second, roll call vote.
Jane Bowersholt?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Forman?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Abby Wilder?
Yes.
I move to place ordinance 2024-13 on second reading by short title only, second.
Motion second. Wait, I'm sorry, what, what was the motion?
Second reading, short title only.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance number 2024-15, an ordinance fixing the salaries and wages for employees of the City of Decatur, Indiana, for the year 2025. I move to pass ordinance 2024-15 on its second reading, second.
Okay, motion second, roll call vote.
Jane Bowersholt?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Forman?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yeah.
Abby Wilder?
Yes.
I move to table ordinance 2024-15 until our next meeting on October fifteenth, second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Next?
Okay, next we have salary ordinance for elected officials.
I move to introduce ordinance 2024-16 on its first reading by short title only, second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance number 2024-16, an ordinance fixing the salaries and wages for employees... Whoops, I am sorry, I'm going to read that again, start that again. I was looking at the same copy of the previous ordinance.
This is sixteen.
So, this is 2024-16, an ordinance establishing the salaries to be paid to the elected officials of the City of Decatur, Indiana, for the year 2025. I move to pass ordinance 2024-16 on its first reading, second.
Motion second, roll call vote.
Jane Bowersholt?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Forman?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yeah.
Abby Wilder?
Yes.
I move to place ordinance 2024-16 on its second reading by short title only, second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Ordinance number 2024-16, an ordinance establishing the salaries to be paid to the elected officials of the City of Decatur, Indiana, for the year 2025. I move to pass ordinance 2024-16 on its second reading, second.
Motion second, roll call vote.
Jane Bowersholt?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Forman?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yeah.
Abby Wilder?
Yes.
I move to table ordinance 2024-16 until our next meeting on October fifteenth, second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay. That is all of those. Okay, um, Jeremy has a request from a resident for a handicap parking, 222 South Fourth Street.
When we were paving down in that area, I met with papers, we had this question, the owner of the home, her husband come out and talk it, just in general, and, uh, he asked me what the changes were to getting handicaps on with her house. Knowing the house very well, because I grew up in it for twenty-five years, um, the, there's ample parking in the, in the rear of the home, uh, but it's very, I wouldn't say impossible, but very difficult if you're locally challenged to get out of the back. It's got narrow doors, it's got thresholds where they're set down, um, the house was added on to back in the seventies and eighties, um, so, I can really understand, I can be bothered that it is an issue. Uh, the previous owners, after my parents had moved out, had put a ramp on the front of the home, they, she was also, uh, locally challenged, uh, so, I think this is a legit request, um, it would be directly across the street from the First Baptist Church, down the alley, down on Fourth Street.
Uh, I think one of the issues there is, between the church and the county building, there can be a lot of cars parked down there, and if you have, um, somebody with some handicap needs, that they kind of, they really need to park right in front of the house, so, could be any time during the week, could be the weekend, that there gets to be a lot of cars down there, and they may or may not be able to have a spot to park.
Over the years, when my parents were having issues, we'd just park vehicles around, because we know it was temporary, so, I, I feel for the individual, so, knowing that it is his issue.
I trust your recommendation, Jeremy, and I, um, I mean, I think I'd have a hard time turning down anybody who is in need of a handicap spot for their own home, and, so, I'll make a motion to grant that handicap parking spot.
I'll say it.
Motion second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
I'll do an amendment to...
I'm dying there.
So, that'll be through an amendment to our traffic schedule, because those are identified in our code of ordinance, so we'll have that next meeting.
Um, okay, let's go ahead and talk about, we have a, a proposal here from Engineering Resources, uh, Kevin and I met with, uh, Engineering Resources, out, some riverfront conceptual designs, for, I know, you know, the park, in the park plan, they have, uh, some park area along the river, um, near the chamber, I think it'd be really exciting to make some improvements to the whole river and the riverfront, and the riverside area, um, some, maybe some seating on the, on the slopes of the river, some different things, um, Engineering Resources is a group that designed Promenade Park, they also designed a whole bunch of the bridges in Fort Wayne, um, they're, they're working a lot with the whole, uh, the river improvements all along the downtown in Fort Wayne. Um, where this came from was that, there's, there's been some grant funding out there, the Ready Fund, some different things, and what we're finding is, if you don't have, um, designs, if you don't have, you know, the, the costs, everything associated with it, you don't even get looked at for the grant funding. I think that's been some of our problems for, for receiving some of the bigger grants for big projects, is, we kind of wait till it's out there, and then we try to build something together, well, that's, that's not how it works, I, I've learned from a lot of the other cities, that they're always having these projects, you know, waiting on a shelf for the right funding to come out. Uh, and it does, it takes the money to get, get it done, but if we want to make these transformational changes to our downtown area, to, to the city in general, we need to get some projects in line, and waiting for the right funding when it comes out. Um, the idea from Engineering Resources is there would be some public meetings, bring the public in, and see what kind of things they would like to have around the river, obviously get the Parks Board involved, and, because it is, you know, Riverside is a park area, um, but I think it'd be really cool for our downtown to make some improvements around the river, have some seating, have some, you know, whether it's playgrounds, splash pads, all these different things can happen, but we need to get the design done first, and, and I think this comes up with a few different designs, they'll have renderings, they'll have, uh, what, what's the video?
It goes up to three different designs, yeah, with 3D videos and renderings, and the whole, the whole sort of options.
Right, right, they kind of step how they did Promenade, and, and the, the main thing would be, I've never worked for these guys, but, the fact that they dealt with flooding with the rivers, and everything they designed along the riverfront, Fort Wayne, had to do with the Hundred Year Flood, and they showed us on diagrams, um, how they moved everything, and how, you know, they, they had, they had the background of working with the river and flooding, and that's a big deal for us here. Um, I know Nate Rumschlag, who used to be the city engineer, who's now with the county, um, he met with them years ago about the Jackson Street Bridge, and trying to make some improvements around that area, um, so, I know, I, I talked to him the other day, he's definitely, he says these guys are definitely capable of doing this work around the riverfront. Um, I talked to them about meeting with the DNR and Army Corps, I've made some of those phone calls, they said they do all that, they, they know the, all the steps of doing the permitting and everything involved, so, um, they gave us a proposal, there's a, um...
Thirty-eight thousand.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of, oh, there's project planning, there's conceptual design, um, the total cost of everything is thirty-eight thousand. Um, again, when we're, when you're wanting to go after grants of five hundred thousand to a million dollars or more, you know, you, you have to have things ready. I was hoping to put this project into some funding this summer, and I was basically told, you can't even apply because you don't have everything you need to do to do it, so, I really think this would be huge for our whole downtown area, um, any questions?
I think it's smart to be proactive and be authoritative for, uh, preparing grants and such, plus, I think it's, I mean, we have, we're lucky enough to be on a river, and I think it's smart to do projects that are, that bring us to the river, I mean, look at what Fort Wayne did, I think it's a nice place to gather and brings people into the community.
Right, again, I think one of the biggest things is, is the, the public engagement, once we move forward with the, with this group, if that's what we decide to do, um, I'm, I'm excited to have the public meeting and see what people... And kayak rental, I know we had a park plan a few years ago, and had a, a survey out there, and, you know, obviously a splash pad, everyone wants, everyone wants to see a splash pad, canoe and kayak rental was, was big, the extension of the trails, um, this group is also the engineering group that's working on the, what is it, Deck Overlay in twenty-six, Jeremy, is that right? So I think twenty-twenty-seven, two years, they're, they're the engineering firm for this deck overlay of the bridge here, um, if we were to take the, the trail under the bridge from one side of two twenty-four to the other, up to Riverside Center, this would be a perfect time to do it, because they're going to put the scouring and the riprap and everything in the river, they said if that's something we want to do, now would be the time to start planning for that, so...
And just to add to that, even if grant funding doesn't come available, we have a planning tool to budget for future uses, if it's something that must have moved forward, we have cost estimates in the design.
Also with that in mind, just keep in mind that in the next, probably, I think, sixteen, eighteen months, we will be redoing the park plan, five-year park plan, so the, the more of this you get done and get planned, um, then we get it stuck into the park plan.
Right.
That, that's going to get you that much closer to the grant line, because all this stuff, or majority, I would say, all of it, especially if you go for DNR money, has to be in the park plan.
Right, right.
To even be, even remotely considered.
Right, and I know that the last park plan has that area turned into a park, you know, so it's not specific, but this would get more specific in cost and everything, so, yeah.
Correct, so it's just updates to that.
Right, yep, thank you.
So, it's very important that you spend the next year, year and a half, trying to fix some of that stuff.
Right.
And this really, to me, goes back to stellar communities, um, we, as a community, we are stellar, and we're going to do these projects one at a time, and it's getting us closer to the, checking those off the list of...
Right, exactly.
On to the next project.
Even though we didn't receive the funding back then, everyone, you know, it was before me, but everyone, a lot of those things have been done, they've been accomplished because they were part of the plan.
Mayor Schultz, Mayor Meyer, and now you, bringing these to fruition.
Probably should be funded.
Probably are the funds, yeah, I mean, I think it's, you know, it's planning for our future, I think it's, I think it's a good use of it.
I'll make a motion to use our funds to move forward with here, project.
I'll second it.
Motion second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay. Yeah, just excited, everything. I'm really excited about the downtown in this river area, so, this, this could be one of the first steps. Okay, um, oh, we need to talk about, uh, in the border works, they voted to move forward with, um, the back of one thirty-eight North Second Street, um, has to come to council to make decisions on the funding of that, if, if we want, if you guys still want to move forward with it. Um, economic development is basically work on a project to redo that whole building, um, they received some of the ready funding from Ready one point O, I think it was like two hundred and...
Two hundred and eighty thousand.
Two hundred and eighty thousand they received to move forward with that project, um, and we ask that we get to keep the back of the building for storage, there's a lot of fencing and barricades and cones and things that we need downtown, it would be nice to have a location to, uh, keep all that downtown, that, you know, it'd be very expensive to find some land downtown and build a building to store all that, and we have one right here, it just needs, needs updated, it needs a new roof. have one right here. It just needs, needs updated, needs a new roof, needs some things. Um, Economic Development agreed to pay twenty-five thousand dollars of that and I think with the quote from Limberlost, it was another twenty-one thousand, I think.
Forty-six thousand total.
Yeah, to redo that, the whole back of that building.
Smart to do it while they're there.
Yeah.
Is that another ARPA expenditure or?
It could be, yeah. Um, it'd be a good, good use for that. Um, I'm, I can do some digging also to, um...
All that ARPA money needs to be, uh...
By the end of this year?
Allocated by, invoices are under contract by the end of this year.
Do we have a round number about how much we have left of that?
Four hundred and some.
Half a million?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just under half a million.
And then that money needs to be used in?
By the end of twenty-six.
Twenty-six, yep.
Yeah, we have a couple months to make some.
And, and by the end of twenty-four, you actually have to have either under contract or invoices, so.
It's already October.
Correct.
So I'd make a motion to move forward using ARPA funds unless Kevin sees fit to use other funds first.
Okay.
I'll second.
And there's no, they're not starting to work on the back portion in between now and the next meeting, so I can have something by the next meeting. That's good.
Okay. Motion is second. Call the favor.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Okay.
I think that's all I have on the agenda.
Do you have anything?
Um, no.
You have anything else? Anything for the department head. Jeff?
On October ninth, there's our annual open house from four-thirty to seven-thirty. Uh, Luther and Air will be in. We're gonna do something a little bit different. We have a oversized dollhouse that we will actually burn and you can have, the general public will see why keeping your door shut, why keeping things shut will keep the fire down. And if you have windows or whatever, they'll show different flow patterns through the house, so that's one of the things. EP may be there with their, take your trailer.
Yeah.
Those are a couple of things that are going on. And I'm gonna burst some people's bubbles right here, right now, but our office one-on-one is canceled for October. We only had three people signed up and to do that for what we have to do to set everything up, three people, probably are planning to try to do it this spring.
What was the time of that open house?
Four-thirty to seven-thirty on basically that point of there.
Okay. Thanks for, for doing the dollhouse thing. And if you can get AEP's trailer in here, that's, that's great. That actually shows people. I mean, if nothing else, it scares kids a little bit, but not, I mean, scares them but teaches them. Uh, I know I've seen that trailer burn and it's, when, when it gets from the couch to the curtains, it's crazy how it happens. Um, it definitely opens people's eyes up. Jeremy, anything?
Um, the yard lease collection will end next week, next Friday, so try to get yourself out before then. The regular leaf season normally starts, it's dictated by the people that trade. So we, we stop yard lease in Orlando a week or two, uh, ahead of time to prepare our own complete collection of machines and stuff ready, uh, get a little lot and cleaned up. So, uh, look forward to that. Hyder collection, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. The fall and leaf will be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday due to the holiday. Uh, Columbus Day deal on Sunday. Uh, AEP should have finished up tonight. I did not make it out to, to see them at the end of the day, but Riverside Center Bot was last, uh, so that should be all completed. When I came in tonight, uh, Eric Marking was finishing up all the pavement markings. They were hoping it'll also be done tonight, so there's too many projects that's been going on for about three, four weeks here, but it's nice to get it done. Um, I want to thank you guys again for the support for Community Crossings, Grant Matching Program, that's, that's made a world of difference. Uh, well, pavement markings, all, all the AEP and such. We should hear sometime in October on the next round. Uh, the next round will be if we are awarded probably equally large, if not a little bit larger, due to the extra money that we set aside for that program for twenty-four. Uh, so it's all good stuff.
Yep.
Uh, we'll be making that around the next couple days, um, just kind of doing some inspection on the asphalt, make sure that there's no sidewalks or anything that need to be fixed or replaced due to, um, the paving. Uh, just kind of doing the, the inspections. So, that's it.
All right. Kevin G.
Um, we have a, we have a night shoot scheduled and last year I did not do a big job of advertising that, so I remember this year. So October eighth and October ninth, six-thirty PM to ten-thirty PM each night, we'll be doing night training. And then, uh, our hiring process, we're, we're winding down applications. Those are due by this Friday and we now have sixteen applications. Technically, seventy-one we've turned it twice.
Very.
Are there bonus points for that or, or no?
We'll let them go through the assembly desk twice.
I've, I've watched that before, no thanks.
And we'll do that testing, uh, on, on October twelfth, uh, Saturday afternoon.
Okay. Thank you. Carrie?
Uh, the deadline here, fifty-two, we're prepared, ended yesterday. We have fifteen people that applied, so that's enough and forty more to go. So we'll be sending out another notice that's fiction issued.
Okay, thank you. Kurt?
Good.
Good. Aaron?
Good.
Josh?
Good.
Bill?
Good.
Jamie?
Yes.
Okay. Kevin, you have anything yet?
I think so.
Yeah. Public. King, northern meeting, king.
Oh, hand out, Brooke.
We can share.
Um, I'll tap you now, first.
That's what I'm asking. I could take any part.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. I'm Jean Corrigan, um, and I live at seventeen, seventeen Winchester, of course, Winchester, Indiana, not hurt. Yeah. So the thing is, we are very nervous about the riverfront redevelopment district. And in a question that WCBD put out on Facebook, uh, their response, there was a hundred and fifty total comments about, um, their question was, what are your thoughts on a riverfront apartment in the, apartment building along the riverfront area? And the plan for riverfront park along the St. Mary's River in DeCayres, um, between Monroe and Jefferson Street, it's kind of part of the DeCayres Indiana Comprehensive Plan since two thousand and ten. Um, and you can see in your handout there, if you flip the page, there's the cover sheet for the contract in two thousand and ten. And behind it, it's a very detailed, you know, condition of what we thought apartment.
I don't want to.
We had, um, open meetings about it in public and it has been expected along that line. But then, um, recently, uh, the project was, um, thought about having a public in that same area. And many of us in the city thought that it was, or, you know, citizenry thought that it was just a problem of available funding. I know that there were, uh, there was some sewer work along there that kind of put sixty and so, and whatever. But we always assumed that the entire riverfront would be dedicated to, uh, to the public, to our, um, you know, visitors, uh, that, that that was just gonna be the thing. Now there's a MOU, M-O-U, Memorial Memorandum of Understanding with a consulting firm about the possibility for an apartment to get. And we haven't really, I guess, do we have to add, we haven't really adequately asked the public input on this. And frankly, as the person that I sort of knew it was rumbling of it, but I thought, oh no, I never really do this. And then so I was, I was actually shocked, um, to realize that a serious MOU is like in the work about apartments. And I'm just asking you please return to Comprehensive Plan. I know it was brought up tonight and why for that. Uh, but the plan was to have the entire riverfront park area, um, you know, originally promised to the people. Look, I have care of the six hundred thousand dollar condos there, okay? I don't think that any public, I would be residential buildings were ever meant to be along there. That was not the understanding. And so the idea is not, I mean, you can get into the weeds of, you know, is it housing affordable or housing, you know, and that's a euphemism or something else. Affordable to the public means, oh, something that is, um, you know, I can go to a renter and I can expect a reasonable price, anywhere between sixteen, or six hundred dollars to a thousand dollars, maybe not ever high sixteen, you know, sixteen hundred dollars. But, um...
We need to, you get two minutes and, and you weren't on the agenda.
You're right.
So we need to...
You've got everything here.
Yeah. And just to let you know, I don't know, have you been to any housing conferences or seminars for the state of Indiana or northeast Indiana talking about the housing crisis? And every city is housing. I was at one last week, I was at one a couple weeks ago, and everyone's wanting to know what you're doing for your community for housing. We had a study done. There was a, a major firm that did a study of northeast Indiana looking at housing needs.
I'm not just talking about housing. I'm, I'm talking about the riverfront.
And we just talked about a park plan along the riverfront.
Then how would that?
It's just a different spot. This, this, and this was from two thousand and ten, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay. There's been a lot of things happening since two thousand and ten.
To be, your present plan, which is listed, your present plan is two thousand and fifteen, and right there is the riverfront park. That's what's on your website.
And, okay, so, um, so in that way you're talking about, the apartments are looking at right here. This is where they're looking at the apartments.
But we were, we were all, as we talked, even the, very involved with the sculpture tour, we, we had the understanding that, that as the city took over land, it was going to...
The Parks, the Parks Department never purchased, the Parks Department never purchased any of this land.
The Parks Department didn't purchase this land, did it? Isn't this considered city land or are you saying that's Parks Department?
Sewer's Department owns most of this land, to be honest.
I know, because when we, we, we asked for that building as part of the DeCayres Sculpture Tour, City Sewers said, no, you can't have that building and turn it into an exhibition hall and everything because we, we have it. And then it, it ended up that nobody took care of the roof and now...
I think she's talking about, I think she's talking about the Marx Building, but I'm not sure if that's what she's talking about.
Well, I mean, Madison Street is, project is not even on here. Like, that's still a street on this map. Is that correct?
No, I'm not, well...
So, I'm, well, my point is like, when I look at this drawing from two thousand and ten, um, Madison Street, you know, the concert areas and everything, that was not there. So obviously, things have been done that have not even been in line with this original drawing. And so I'm just saying things have changed, you know?
Jean, if you look at two thousand and fifteen Madison Street, you want to know...
I, I would tell you that...
I will.
You, the doors are always open up here. You can come talk to anybody anytime. This is not the time or place to do this right now.
Well, I was, I want to say too, like, I appreciate you coming, Jean, but also, um, like, Facebook comments, I would love to see those people come.
Yeah.
All these people who are commenting on Facebook, like, they're all just criticizing and...
Everything?
Yeah, and nobody's actually...
There were a lot of frustrated people. I don't have those marks.
So, so here's the thing. We haven't received one phone call, one email, one anything about this stuff. I don't look at social media posts because I see what they are. If they want to call anytime, they want to stop in City Hall anytime, send an email anytime, that's the conversations we have.
We used to have, Jean, our meetings over at Riverside Center. That was brought anywhere between fifty and a hundred and fifty people. We had it often, this mayor before you.
I think I mentioned with this, having public engagement, and that's why I can't wait to have, have...
And I'm here publicly engaging and you said this is not the place here.
Did you, did you call and ask to get on the agenda?
No, because I didn't know about the health of my mother. I'm sorry.
And I'm sorry for that. I'm very sorry for that.
Mrs. Byrne, this is a public, this is a public comment opportunity, so this isn't even really...
We don't even have to allow it. If we do, we don't. It's, it's not a public hearing. This is not a public hearing.
It's a public comment.
Sorry, it took over my two minutes.
However, it is, it is, if you want to engage the council members, and this is for anyone in the general public, there's a request to be placed on the agenda and that allows for the discussion with, with council members. After we go through the agenda items, we go through our department head, then we open it up for a public comment and that is limited to a two-minute period of time, but it is a public comment. It's not meant to add to the agenda items. If you do want to be on the agenda, we happy to put you on it.
As we said, stop in, call, email, our doors are always open.
Any of it?
We're glad to talk to people. I'm not going to do it on social media. That's, I don't need to. I'm, I would love to have a face-to-face comment with anybody, a conversation with anybody that wants to.
Jean, some people can't even get here to do that. And it shouldn't be that way.
Okay, I, um, I'll be here. I'm here eight, four-thirty pretty much every day. I'll come at ten o'clock at night if somebody wants to meet me. I think people can make the time, if they want to, to have a conversation. People can.
But WCBD was kind enough to ask for input. I, I gave you the, you know...
You gave us a bunch of Facebook posts, yes.
Yeah, I did.
Yes.
Sixty-nine comments against it or in favor of apartments on the river.
Okay. Look at anything that's posted and, and count the negative against the positive for just about anything.
Well, that's what I'm hoping.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, thanks for your presentation.
And it's saying that's undesirable.
Thanks for your presentation.
I didn't expect one of these things.
I mean, you slapped out a bunch of Facebook comments in front of us and you don't expect it to be contentious.
I'm, I'm asking you to ponder it.
There will, we will, and there will be time for public comments, for sure.
You're gonna set up a public forum.
We want public engagement. We do. Yep.
I hate to say that.
Anytime. Anything else from public? Kevin, yes?
Jeff and I were just discussing, uh, um, the summer planning board Tuesday. Last Tuesday, a pretty bad wreck out in front of Papa John's. Uh, someone driving a car had a medical event, went out of control and they struck a, an electrical pole right in front of Papa John's. Uh, and it was seven, two hundred volt.
We think it was seventy-two hundred volts. It was actually laying on the ground. So we had, the general public ran, ran up to the car, pulled the person out. And we don't know if it was live or not. We don't, we treat everything as live because the power in Papa John's was still on, old sign drawn, all the lights drawn on most sides of the street. They have to be checked.
Just a reminder not to run out, so.
Just a reminder not to run up to them. Especially if it's hard, you want to help a person, that could have been catastrophic. There were some people that ran up and grabbed the car, the cable was.
Right, right. Okay, no, thanks for that, yeah, definitely, we don't need people around power lines that are down. Anything from council?
I don't think we're prepared yet, but I want to continue the discussion with Jeremy and his crew and heavy trash moving forward, some recommendations from Jeremy on how we change that, if we change that, what that looks like in the future.
Yeah, yeah.
I think he was prepared to give a presentation or anything, but it's a discussion I want to have.
Definitely worth discussing. When's the next one, be April, the next one?
I sent you some polls. Get some polls, I'll get it out to the rest of you. It has went up some over the last few years, but we're also cleaning up eventually as a community, so, you know, there are some comments that go along with that. Yet I really think the last year, what, what drove it up a little bit is what I want to make. And we allow what's stuck in a can to be picked up weekly. So heavy trash, what's not in the can is going out, or, the regular trash, what's in the can is going in regular trash, and what's, doesn't fit in the can during the two cycles of years, get it towards heavy trash.
Right.
You know, we've had, during the COVID times, that one real big one in June, that meant you picked up like a hundred or a hundred-and-twenty ton. Just the heavy trash alone. One in last month, I believe it was one-fifty, and the one prior was like a hundred. They bounced around for thirty, so, you know. But you can see where it's starting to, you know.
Yep.
But be careful if we restrict it because it's not lining up with the curves.
Right. Right. Okay. Definitely have some discussions over that. Anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same sign.
And a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same sign.